Tingsboro Planning Boards Meeting March sixth, twenty twenty-five. We'll start with introductions.
I'm Pamela Vermin.
Ben McClure.
Jeremy Baldwin.
Kimberly O'Brien.
Steve O'Neil.
Dave Robson.
Chaz Doughty.
David Nader with T E C.
Uh, we're gonna start with A and R, twenty-two, twenty-six Westford Road. How you doing?
Mr. Chairman. Douglas Housler from Lampert Housler and Robin, representing the applicant. I believe we've complied with the requirements for A and R endorsement. Submitted all the required plans with the right endorsements. So, all the required information, it's adding about thirty-six thousand square feet of land from the condominium over to my client, which is the property, uh, you probably noticed, Comet Steiner, uh, complex twenty-two dash twenty-six Westford. So, he's taken the rear portion that the condominium just doesn't use because there's the brook running through it. And we're just adding that land as extra protection, that's all. And I believe everything else is before you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
So, the part you're taking is highlighted in the dark black, I guess?
That's correct.
Thirty-six thousand, seven hundred five square feet.
Yes, sir.
Alright, we'll start with Dave. Did you go through all the paperwork?
Yeah, I went through all the paperwork. Um, the parcel itself is existing, existing non-conformance, but this doesn't change it. I didn't really see anything, um, that stood out to me. I think the only, the only comment that I had was, um, with the, um, existing condos, just if this swap of land ended up, uh, putting that, um, um, that approval out of any sort of, you know, open land space or anything like that, but I doubt.
No, the condominium lawyers, um, Richard Brooks, who's, um, one of the two preeminent firms on condominiums, went through that as well and confirmed it. In fact, I have the deed already. So, he confirmed it, and we had more than two-thirds, in fact, I think we had three-quarters of, uh, approval of the unit owners as well, plus the trustees. So, we went through all the steps.
Alright, we'll start, I guess.
No questions?
No comment.
Any plans to develop back there, or just?
In fact, we, a very small portion, it has been used pretty much adversely by my client for thirty-five, forty years. His, uh, in the rear, it's, allows a truck to go around the property. So, he's been using it for years, and this just kinda makes it official, but most of the land is un, we're not gonna touch.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
I guess the only question I have, probably through P M. Do you know if there's anything in the condominium, uh, decision that would adversely affect it? You sure? Yep? Alright. Wish of the body.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the A and R for twenty-two, twenty-six Westford Road.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Here are none. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you all members.
Okay. Next up, we got four oh five Middlesex Road, continued from one-two-twenty-five for an as-built.
Evening, Mr. Chair. Mike Novak from Patriot Engineering. Just, uh, here to answer any questions. Um, I wasn't, I wasn't aware until Benjamin reached out that he needed a representative, so that's why we've had a little, we've had a little, uh, timing in between getting this submitted and getting someone here. So, unfortunately, the owner couldn't join me tonight, but we wanted to at least get in front of you and, uh, see if there's anything we needed to, to take care of before, before you tonight.
Alright, Dave, would you see on the, uh?
The as-built.
As-built.
I mean, I had what, four, four comments? Um, the first one, I think it was the, the biggest one, was the layout of the site shifted approximately four feet.
So, uh, I'm sorry, there was, there was comments?
Yep. Can you let him finish? We'll, you'll hear him now, and we'll go through it.
We did? Okay, I must not have seen them. I apologize. Go ahead, please. Yeah.
So, yeah, it says the layout of the site shifted approximately four feet east compared to the approved plan set. Um, this change resulted in a landscape area along the eastern perimeter, approximate two, you know, two-to-one slope. Um, second one, sidewalk and landscape area has been constructed in different orientation, um, resulted in approximately a hundred square feet more impervious area. This minor change doesn't necessarily impact the overall stormwater design, just calling out all the inconsistencies. Um, a no-left turn traffic signal has been substituted in the location, the proposed right turn only. Once again, kind of small potatoes on that one, but just inconsistency. And then the, uh, Cape Cobb berm that, uh, has been constructed instead of the vertical granite curbing that was previously approved. Those are the four comments that I had.
Jeremy?
I think, um, we just wanted to know why, why the four feet was moved and why the curbing wasn't installed. I think those are the two things that I heard.
Well, I guess you wanna address them now, or you wanna go fix them and then come back?
Well, um, I can certainly talk about the, the building. Um, we're not gonna fix that, cause that's constructed, so, um, there was a survey issue. Uh, so, to maintain the five-hundred square, the five-hundred-foot setback, door-to-door, um, the building did need to shift slightly. So, it was just a survey issue in terms of boundary and layout. I could probably get some more information for you, but it was one of those things that when we staked it in the field, we realized, wait a minute, something's off here. Remeasured everything, kicked, kicked the building to maintain the five-hundred feet. And then the curbing, that was, uh, construction administration change, cost savings, availability of material. That's strictly why it was, it was just a, a cost saving, mostly cost saving, and then.
And when they were here, they knew we wanted the granite curbing.
Okay.
So, I think you better go back to, well, we'll let the board decide, but I'm not signing off on an A and R that isn't, uh, you know, shifting a building four feet or coming into, uh, CS faring, deciding to save money before coming to CS after knowing, I think this board's feelings on the granite was kinda, I guess, taking us for granted, but, uh, we'll let the rest of the board weigh in.
My only other, uh, comment, uh, response to the, um, the four feet, I, because I, this has been, I remember this being a very contentious thing of litigation. So, making sure that, the way that it was situated before, and the reason why there's a weird cut off the building, I thought that was the whole premise behind keeping that distance. Remember how, how they've, they would've had the entrance as a ninety-degree angle, and it's cut off at the end? I thought that was the whole.
It, it was.
Then there were further issues again?
Yeah, so, I, sorry, I don't mean to, I, I would think it probably makes sense for me to document the changes and, and get a written response back to the board to explain it from A to Z. But, so we can at least probably be on the same page before we discuss.
Kim?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think four oh five Middlesex Road is, is one of the gateways to Tingsboro, so the idea that, that you went ahead and decided not to use the granite curbing is, uh, really very disappointing and not something I'm willing to accept.
You good? David?
I'll reiterate the granite curbing, as you know, and then I'd like to see, um, the surveyors, all the reports for, uh, making sure you're, meet all the setbacks for the neighbors, and just so you know, if you ever do any more work in Tingsboro, if you're gonna make a change like that, it's pretty important you come in front of the board.
Understood.
Cause I'm sure that was figured out right when you sat down to do the pinning of the foundation, I'm sure.
Yes.
You should've stopped right there and come back in front of this board.
Ted. Chaz?
Yeah, so who, who did the surveying?
Um, it was, uh, sub, subcontractor myself, Hayes, Hayes Engineering.
So, you were involved in the survey?
Not physically, but I managed it.
Okay, so let's, let's turn this around, and let's say it's four feet closer. Instead of four feet further away. We'd be having a whole different conversation right now.
Well, of course, yes, understood.
You'd be putting something else in there, other than dispensary. Does anybody from the town look at this at all? As, as, I mean, don't you have to have sign-offs here and there as you're going through the process of building?
I believe we submitted an as-built foundation plan to the building department, um, in order to move forward. Typically, you submit, um, an as-built foundation plan certified before you can go vertical in terms of framing. So, that was submitted. I could certainly provide that to the planning staff as well.
Go ahead.
And is it, do we know if it's re-surveyed after that, or they just go and go, yeah, Alex, I mean, four feet you're not gonna pick up on probably, but a survey certainly should.
So, it's a little more, and that's why I'd like to give you a written response, to walk you through the entire, the, the entire, um, process as to how that happened. But the, it was staked, it was, uh, built, the foundation or the slab was put in, then it was re-surveyed for cert, and certified as the as-built. The distances, of course, to the other facility were checked, and then the final as-built, so it's technically surveyed three times.
And it never got picked up during those three surveys, that it was off four feet?
No, it was picked up when it was laid out, that was my point. And so, every.
And, and why didn't you come back before the board and say, hey?
That was just a, I know, we, we made it comply, but your point of it should've been brought to your, this board's attention is, is heard and understood, and there's no reason other than oversight.
Well, I'm just very disappointed that we did, where, you know, the whole building's up and done, and then we find out about.
I understand.
After everything's all said and done.
So, when you first went to get your foundation permit, you submitted a foundation plan?
Uh, we submitted a, a proposed plot plan to get the building permit.
So, on your proposal, was it changed the setbacks? Or did you change the setbacks after for your as-built, for the foundation? In other words, you went with your, here you go, here's your proposal, I proposed. So, I'm assuming your proposed had what the planning board allowed, correct?
No, the, the proposed actually was, was, um, and in hindsight, that would've been the point, the time to bring it to your attention. It was revised to meet the setbacks.
So, you revised it without the okay of the board?
And when we submitted it to the planning board, yeah. Now that I'm walking you through it, yes, when we submitted the building permit.
You know the procedure. How long you been in the business?
Yeah, it was an oversight.
How long you been in the business?
Long enough to know better.
So, my point is, did you give the building department a proposed foundation plan, right, before he gave you your permit?
Yes.
And then went back with an as-built?
Which matched the proposed.
So, you knew before you even dug that you moved it four feet?
Yeah, it's just, it, like I said, an oversight to not follow through with the planning department.
Was the building commissioner aware of that?
Aware of the?
That, that you changed from the planning boards?
I'd, I'd, I'd have to check my email.
Probably not.
I'd, I don't know.
I wouldn't think he would.
Mr. Chair, if you'd like to know, I contacted him, and he had no idea.
Okay. Okay.
Alright, go ahead, uh.
I actually wanted to know about why you changed the orientation of the parking.
Of the, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
Parking?
The orientation of the parking.
Does it sidewalk and landscapes to the west of the building have been constructed in a different orientation than was planned, than was approved in the plan set?
Cause they moved the building.
Yeah, uh, yeah, we had to, we had to change the sidewalk to match the building shift.
So, again, you just took it for granted?
Well, we tried to change as little as possible, so we only changed in and around the building area. The parking lot should lay out the same.
Okay.
I, I, if I may, I, I understand the board, the board's frustration and point, I, and I'd like to get the board up to speed and then allow us to move forward.
What I say is, I don't need to be a pisky, I need you to correct what's wrong.
Okay.
And then come back, uh, before I sign an A and R.
As-built.
I'm sorry, an as-built.
I know what you meant, but thank you.
Understood. Any, anybody else on the board? Anything else?
I mean, no, well, let's, let's get the, get it closer to what it should be, and then we'll talk some more about it at that point.
Alright, you all set?
I am, thank you.
Okay.
Do we need to request a continuance or anything?
Pardon me?
Do I need to ask for a continuance, or we're just?
As far as I'm concerned, you come back when it's, it's designed.
The next meeting is, um, March twentieth.
Thank you. Alright, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, next up, four ninety-nine Potash Hill Road, continued from one-two-twenty-five.
Next up to see the doctor.
If I get paid like a doctor, we'd be all set, but I don't, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for having, having me in. Sorry, I missed the January second meeting, there was, there was an oversight. Where do you wanna start?
I guess we can start with, uh, Charles, any, Dave?
It's an as-built review, I think we just called out all of the inconsistencies between the approved set of plans and the as-built. I think the majority of the project was consistent with the approved plans, the following noted inconsistencies. The vinyl stockade fence has been installed in place of the proposed barrier fence wall, which the detail for that was two-by-ten boards stacked horizontally secured to metal posts. There was a twenty-five linear foot stretch of, um, wall was not constructed west of the access easement, um, but then an additional twenty-five feet of additional barrier fence was being constructed on the eastern end. So, essentially the access easement down to Steinbeck Street, um, there was twenty, twenty-five feet that was proposed that wa, on the other side of that, that wasn't built, but they attacked on twenty, uh, additional twenty feet on the, um, on the other side of the stockade. Timber guard rail on the eastern side of the parking lot had not been constructed, um, and then so some planting inconsistencies. Um, there's a ninety-foot gap between plantings south of the barrier wall, um, on the as-built is kind of in the middle there. Couple of red sunset maples had not been planted at the time of our, um, inspection, and this is back in December, so I don't know if anything had been, um, done since then. Traffic signs hadn't been installed, light pole at the western side of the parking lot hadn't been installed, and the proposed posts and signs labeled, please be mindful to neighbors, um, had not been installed. That's kind of a overview of it.
You wanna take it from there, and then we'll?
Sure. So, on, on the fence, um, many of these, and I'll illustrate which ones, uh, were potential cost savings and which ones actually cost more. But if you recall the meeting we had for the, uh, site plan review with the neighbors, uh, they were very worried about lights and noise and things like that. So, the first piece, when we came to the fence, um, that was more of a, of a look. We got some samples of what that was gonna look like, and it, it would've been good for Long Route Three, but to be backed up to their houses, the look was, was, uh, just not consistent with what we wanted to do, what we thought it would look like. So, we had the fence folks come out and, uh, do the, the, the stockade fence, as you saw. It cost, actually cost more money than the estimate for the other one, so it was, wasn't a cost savings at all, but it certainly adds to the, uh, aesthetics of the parking lot. I've actually had a, several comments from, I, I had a, uh, somebody out here, I was at the town hall this week, and somebody stopped me and said, you're from the Sports Center? Said, that is a beautiful parking lot. Said, number one rated in Tingsboro parking lot. So, that, you know, and they live, they live in those houses, so they, I think they, they liked, I think it exceeded their expectations, so that was the reason for that. All of these, I have no excuse, I sat on that side of the, the chair for six years, so I have absolutely zero excuse for not coming in front of, in front of you to change these, um, other than we were running fast and furious, and it didn't even cross my mind to, that these were major things that would've, you know, done, done harm to the project. As far as the fence wrap, this was one of the comments from the neighbors, and we, uh, I think Jeremy had planting, we had planted some, uh, additional plants for the, for the headlights. We brought that up, if you recall in the meeting. That house, after looking at it, we had the plantings in, and of course, they're only three feet high, so they're not gonna stop a whole lot of headlights right now. Uh, we wrapped that, we took the, the fencing and basically wrapped it around, so those houses that, where the headlight goes are completely covered now, so we basically took that and did almost a ninety. Uh, the other side of the fence where we took it from, cause the, the dis, the, uh, footage is only off by a few feet, right? There's, there's, you know, if you add it up, the twenty-five feet over there.
Five feet.
Comes around, yeah.
It's less, but.
Over there, if you look at it, if you, if you drive up there, there's really no house there. You know, that fence would basically not be covering every, anything at all, cause you have the gate, fencing this, this way starts and covers the house, this way here basically looks into the woods. So, it really would've done nothing up there, so we thought better to keep the headlights and any noise from those few houses that are, are a little further downstream. So, that's the, that's the story on the fencing. That, that was the ideas behind why those changes were made, for right or wrong. The, um, Houston End twenty-five. So, if you want that, if you guys want that additional fencing, if you look at it, if somebody take a ride up there and look at it, we'll be glad to, to put it in. The timber guard rail should've actually been changed on the plan when the detention basin, I think, I'm not an engineer, but when, the reason for that was the detention basin. If you recall, it was supposed to be a fairly sizable detention basin right there, so after that parking lot, there was gonna be a, a hole, basically. That was modified, and we sent everything down, we enlarged the detention basin down further. So, if you look at it now, there's really nothing. I mean, there's, there's no harm, a car couldn't, you couldn't do anything, basically, going over that curb. So, again, that's an item, if you want us to put it in, we'll, you know, there's no issue with putting it in, but so, the purpose of it was, I assume, cause there's no guardrail anywhere else, was keeping anybody from going into the pond. Any questions?
Nope. Keep going, you're doing good.
So, the western side of the parking lot, the light pole, the light pole pole was another, uh, concern of theirs. As you can tell, I think we've had the lights on in that parking lot possibly twice, two Saturday nights since then, and the neighbors could attest to that. We did not turn them on anytime during the week, certainly we haven't used the parking lot much at all, we've had some events, but it really hasn't gone late enough to use the lights. Uh, when they did put the lights in, the electrician said, you know, you should take a look at this, cause there's a lot of light coming out of these already, and they, they wired them up, they pre-wired them up, and they had them on, and there was actually plenty of light all across the parking lot. So, another one, um, would've just added to the neighbors', you know, concerns about lighting. I can tell you that, cause I have a light, I have the light pole, I didn't save any money, cause they bought it. It's in my backyard, if anybody would like to.
Purchase one?
Light pole, I'd sell it to you fairly cheap, cause I have no use for it. So, um, again, if, if the, if the board wants to, wants us to put it in, so be it, I'm, I'm willing to get it out of my backyard and put it in the, put it in the ground. The, uh, sunset maples, when we were planting those, um, there was what looked like a lot of trees along that side, so we, if you count the trees in there, we didn't save any money by cutting back on the trees. They, they're planted elsewhere in the, on the property. There's one on the other entrance that didn't have a tree there on the left side of the second entrance. And the traffic signs were just an omission, those will go up in the, in the, in the spring, as well as the sign that basically says, please be considerate of, of the neighbors. And I think that was.
The, what about the, uh, A end of the planting? Ninety feet between plantings, south of the barrier fence wall?
Is that on my side of the fence, or, or the neighbors?
The number of trees matched the proposed plans, however, the proposed plans show the trees spaced approximately thirty feet on center. Stumps from removed trees were observed in the, this gap. Dave, how many trees have, they're not missing, but they're planted elsewhere, I guess?
The where, is this the picture, you mean? Oh, the gap. So, this is on their side?
Correct.
Yeah, this is on the neighbor's side. Uh, I, we tried to go based on where they were on the plan, I don't, I guess we could've been a little bit off. Some of them were, there was some ledge there, and I, we had a post hole digger on a bobcat, and there was no way something was gonna get planted and certain things, so could there be a five or six or eight-foot difference? I guess that's possible, but we didn't, we taped, we taped them up, put some paint down and said where they were gonna go, and we, some we did have to adjust, but I didn't think they were that far.
Is that where you see Dave out there when you went out there?
Yeah, I mean, it was just, there was, it was tough to tell, I mean, there were, um, stumps that were, that were cut down, uh, in this, in this gap, whether they were growing out of ledge, I don't know.
How big of a gap is it? Would you say?
It's, I mean, it's about a ninety-foot gap, I think.
So, there.
I think the proposed plans show this tree spaced thirty feet, thirty feet on center, so.
Thirty-six, so one tree missing in the middle? Basically, or three trees?
Probably two.
Well, some of them, I think on the plan, they showed them pretty close together, like a group of three, and then one was another twenty-five, thirty feet away, if I remember it. I, I don't, I didn't look at the plan lately.
I mean, I think on the plan, they were shown just thirty feet on center going along there, and.
And there's a ninety-foot gap?
Yeah.
Alright.
I mean, some of them, where the fence is on the property line, there was really no space to plant trees, uh, cause we did take some of the neighbors' trees down that were, were in tough shape, and I offered to take them down when the tree cutter was there, and they took us up on it. So, I, some of the stumps, I didn't grind and take out the stumps, cause it was on their property, so you will see some stumps, but any of those that they didn't take out are on their property, I, I can, I would bet you.
The one other thing, Dave, is the, uh, guardrail.
Mm-hmm.
There's no, nothing they can drive in there, so there's no.
No, there's no, there's no basin there anymore.
The basement, yeah. Alright, um, open it up to the board.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just, uh, it looks fantastic up there, I think, uh, the, the whole idea of the, the fence, I look, I think it looks great. I do appreciate just the back and forth that we've had in making the project better, um, just for the neighbors and making sure that, because we focused heavily on, on, on the buffer, on the barriers. I think it's important, just a couple of things to clean up, um, from, from the stuff that T E C had noted. But other than that, uh, you're doing a great job up there, love having you guys in town, uh, hop, hoping to make this a, a good, a good project for you guys, and, you know, what's happening across the, the way here over at the Mass Crane, there's a lot of work happening, and so, it's, it's a good spot for the community, and clean up a couple of things, and I'm, I'm happy.
Kim?
Yeah, sorry to make you repeat yourself, the light pole, you said there's plenty of light on the site, and it's not needed?
Yeah, if you, if you went up there, we turned the lights on, they are, um, there's, those lights that are there are actually pretty, pretty bright. I, I don't think they spray, I think they, they're contained, but they're, they're very good L E D lights. There's certainly plenty of light in the parking lot. That one was, I think, spec'd to be pretty close to the, uh, the other side of the parking lot, actually where the trees are. Yeah, it was gonna be right on the.
Yep.
Yeah, so.
And you've had no complaints or anything from the neighbors, everybody's happy?
No, I mean, as you, as you could tell, they're a happy bunch typically, uh, if you recall, six months ago, um, I, I text Diane if we're doing something with the gate or changing the lock and stuff, so I think, I mean, we've, we've got a, the, the, what do they say, fences, fences make good neighbors or something, so I think it, it actually worked, maybe the, maybe the nicer fence, uh, did something, but, um, no, I think we get along, we haven't, like I said, we haven't used it, so there hasn't been a lot of, and, um, this weekend, we've got an outdoor tournament going on, so I think it'll get some use, but it's not gonna go past the, the dark hours, so.
I think you did a good job with the fence, I like the change to the plastic. As for the light, I'm a widdle, I have seen the lights on up there because I'm up all sorts of crazy hours, um, and the parking lot's lit very well, it looks good, so, and if you're okay with no guardrail, then I'm, I'm fine with that.
We had talked about, um, making sure that there, there were gates or something, or a chain to close that off, has that happened?
There is a chain there, yep. It's a, we left it out during the ice, and it's stuck in the ice right now, so it's.
Okay, yeah, cause I was by there today.
It might be usable now, but.
It didn't look like it was closed off, so I was just wondering if that was.
There's a yellow chain that does go across with the lock. I haven't seen a lot of folks up there that are milling around, I don't think there's.
Well, if you've got something happening, it's sort of.
Yeah, it's.
It's far enough away that no one's gonna park there or use that unless you're really It's far enough away that no one's gonna park there or use that, unless you've really got an overflow going on.
It used to be, um, much quieter with George's addition going on, there's lots of things going on there, so I don't think anybody is bothering, there's nothing, there's no quiet place there to, to sit and do whatever they wanna do, so.
Uh, and you don't see a problem with that light being gone, Dave's been there at night, he's seen it, so, like he said, he's odd quirks and up at weird hours, so.
So you're the one going through the parking?
It's me. They're on a timer, they're on a timer anyways, correct, didn't you say?
Uh, we, we put it, we can put them on a schedule, I have, um, the Lutron system, so I can put them on, on my phone.
So they, you wouldn't leave them?
We put them on, we put them on a schedule, the other, the other outside lights, as I told them in the meeting, we shut them off at one AM anyways.
Yeah, so you would shut off the parking lot ones anyways, you wouldn't want them on all night long, right?
I mooch off of George's lights.
All right.
They're cheap, they're cheaper.
I myself have been up there, and, um, the fence, it, it doesn't affect, that twenty feet or twenty-five feet missing to the right, I guess, driving in, doesn't seem to affect, you know, any, any houses. Um, and if you're saying, by bringing it around, it blocked the other ones, that was the purpose of the fence anyways. So, from what I hear from you, is you're gonna put your sign up and maybe put in a couple more trees, squeeze them in that thirty, thirty foot section or something? But it's on their side, you have the trees on your side, correct?
Well, there's two things, I thought the red, the ones we left out are on the right side of the parking lot, where the light pole would have gone. Those are the ones, it's spec'd two trees there, and I couldn't quite understand why you needed trees, I do understand that by law is, I think, a tree needs to be within thirty feet of any parking spot, so.
Hmm.
That would be why they have them there, but it's a wooded area anyways. We can put them back, we can put them in, it's, it's fine with me, I, but.
I mean, I've been by there, it looks good, but it, I, I'm just thinking of keep your neighbors happy or whatever.
Yeah, I'll go over the plan again, if there's one in the back that we missed, I, they were all the big, uh, what are they called, like, the Christmas trees, the evergreens on the back there. They had a couple of small, the skinny ones, and then the real fat ones, so there's none out front that we, we missed, so I think we, we put them there, whether they might.
Yeah, and they're looking at a new fence now anyways, so.
Yeah.
How soon can you get your sign up, I guess?
As soon as the ground thaws, yeah.
Ground thaws?
Thawing out, yeah.
Well, the body, good with the, I guess, if we take them one at a time, good with the fence extended to the opposite side? Good with that, yeah. I mean, the guardrail, it doesn't make sense to have a guardrail up, uh, up to the body, um.
The guy that plows my snow would like a little more guardrail that he can break, so.
What traffic signs have not been installed, other than?
Other than the stops?
Just the stops?
So.
Just a couple of them?
Yeah, I mean, they don't, it's a parking lot, they don't have a whole, like, a lot of traffic signs out there.
Put them in, right, in the spring?
No, nobody pays atten, nobody pays attention to them.
No, but as long as you put them up, I guess, if you say you're doing it, it's fine.
It's a suggestion.
That's what I call them.
Give the cops a reason to hang around there, right, to go through them. What's the wish of the board?
Fine, chairs? What's the wish of the board, he said, I'm, he said, I'm fine?
You know.
I'd kinda like to see that stuff put in, probably give you a Diaz built.
Let me ask you, do you need?
We could probably have them put in by the next meeting, the ground has softened up enough where we can, we can at least get the, I think the metal poles in, unless we, next week looks good, so.
Um, do you need Diaz built for, other than banality?
I, I don't think so, we're closing on the construction loan, I assume the bank may want that, but I don't know, I don't know if they care.
Closing before the two weeks?
No, I don't think so.
Um, I got no, if you don't mind waiting then, for the two weeks, I have no problem, at least you get the stuff in the ground and all your signs.
That's fine, yeah.
That sound good to everybody?
Yeah.
Now we're there, it's, and, and I don't know if we take a vote for the minor stop to get it off the, uh, off the record that they should be there.
So just to be clear, the two signs?
I guess the, the, two stop signs, is it just two stop signs, and then the?
And the neighbor.
One for the neighbors, I guess.
Yeah.
I'd be good with that, you guys good with that?
Well, what do we, uh, so, as far as the barrier fence, uh, I, I don't mean to go back over every item, but, oh, like, the eight foot stockade fence, um, oh, sorry, not that one. Twenty-five, uh, the twenty-five stretch of eight foot barrier fence, um, I just wanna know where that's located, should we condition that?
Well, that's what I'm saying, we can just condition what's on, you know, the minor change on the plan, so that it, it's legal, I guess.
And then the thirty feet for the trees, that gets corrected?
We'll correct that, I guess, in the vote for the, uh, final as-built. Sounds good?
So you, you want me to do something with the trees, or?
Yeah, to correct them according to what, um, this, the recommendations were, so instead of the ninety feet, it should be the thirty feet, get that cleaned up, um.
So I just wanna be clear, so the fences are on their property line, these are the ones behind the fence?
Yep, I believe so.
So you've just put two trees, I guess, is that what you signed?
Yeah, yeah, just so it means, like I said, we've.
Either that, or we can, I mean.
If you can, if you can give us a reasonable reason why not, but we'd like to hold people to what the plan says for landscaping.
I'd like to look at them tomorrow, because there's no way that, I mean, that whole fence is three hundred feet, there's no way the, the tree span is ninety feet. We put twelve trees back there, fifteen? Half of the trees that were delivered went behind the fence, so I, like I said, they, I think they were, we counted twenty-five or thirty feet, which they were supposed to be, but there were none missing, they were all put in, so.
Why don't you take a look at it, and, and like I say, all I wanna do is clean it up.
I can take some pictures, let me see what, what's there.
Everything here is minor, so I'd like to make a minor modification to the, uh, original plan, so that it matches the plan, so that.
Yeah, yeah.
Everybody's clean.
Okay.
So.
I'll, I'll, we'll get a tape and measure what's, what's where back.
Yeah, and if, if you're not gonna put one in, tell us why, and if the board accepts it, then we'll just, um, you know, vote to take them out.
Okay.
Um, but if you just get the two signs, I don't, I don't see a problem with the fence myself being shifted, uh, I don't think anybody else has a problem with the fence, right? And, and the type of fence, it is a nice fence, so, if you can wait the two weeks, I guess.
Yeah, that's fine.
Um.
All right.
Yeah, good?
That's good, yeah, yeah, thank you.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue four ninety-nine Potash Hill Road till our next meeting on. Yes?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, good luck, we'll see you in two weeks, and hopefully wrap it all up.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, site plan modification discussions for fifty Westford Road. You guys just didn't wanna change stuff?
No, we listened to the first two items, Mr. Chairman, so.
We even watched the good guys come in and ask for the revision now.
At least we hope we knew better.
Could, could be a mistake coming in to ask, right?
I would like not for you to ask me how long I've been in the business, so.
Could be a mistake, yeah, if I have to ask that, right, we're all in trouble. All right, what do you got for us?
So, um, as we've gotten into the site work, you know, it's, it's been, become clear that we need some modifications to some certain things out there because of existing conditions. So, um, we flagged what those issues are, and, uh, we're here solely for the purpose of having you guys make a determination on minor versus major modification, in terms of what our process is rolling forward. Um, we tried to engage the, the town, uh, and, uh, Dave, prior to coming in here, so we could at least have some, Ben, uh, some, some preliminary peer review and analysis of what our changes are. We did see T E C's letter, um, I think we're gonna touch upon, uh, those items, generally speaking, knowing that we're gonna have to be back here again. We are gonna push back on some comments, I think, you know, our focus here is to just deal with the issues that we're changing, and to the extent that there are comments on issues that we're not changing, then, you know, those are governed by the prior approval, and the prior peer review, and the, what had already been shown on the plan. So, you know, we'll shake all that out as we work with, uh, with Dave, and, uh, you know, through the engineers, as we try to finalize this. So, um, these gentlemen are gonna go through what the changes are, uh, briefly touch on T E C's comments, we'll look for a vote from you on minor versus major modification, and then we'll, we'll roll forward and work through the changes, so.
You're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Brian Dunn, I'm the Principal of the Firm, M B L Land Development and Permitting, with offices at five Bristol Drive, and the next town over southeast in Massachusetts. Um, on behalf of the applicant, uh, B A P S, Pam, can you, uh, can you run the slideshow that we have?
Okay.
So you wanna go to, to the next slide, so we can see that. So, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, so, just to bring you up to speed, remembering that we did a site plan approval, uh, through this board, uh, back in July of two thousand twenty-one. We also filed a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission, and an order of conditions was also issued in, uh, July of two thousand and one. The project was peer reviewed at the time of K N N Associates, as well as, uh, many of the town departments. Construction has started, we had, uh, our construction kickoff meetings, and started some of the construction, as you know, as you can drive by, the trees have cleared, uh, some of the loam has been stockpiled, and so on and so forth. Uh, some of the rock has been hammered and, and set up for blasting, some blasting is probably going to occur soon. We also have, uh, all the erosion controls in, in place, those have been inspected, and we also have been doing SWIP inspections on a weekly basis, to be in compliance with the, uh, EPA permit of that, uh, the EPA permit for the SWIP. So, if you wanna go to the next, thank you. So, uh, we've submitted revised plans and a drainage report, that's dated February nineteenth of this year. The proposed modifications are really due to site conditions and, uh, materials that are readily available, in regards to, uh, the drainage structures, uh, that you're gonna hear about, and also, uh, the retaining wall material. It's really due to the functionality of the site, that we're making these changes, uh, we've got updated retaining wall designs that are in the site plans that you have. We've adjusted the parking just a little bit, got rid of a, a lot of the, um, uh, smaller parking spaces, the compact spaces. So we actually increased the spaces from three hundred and sixty-seven, that was originally three hundred and sixty-five, on the site plans that you've, you've, uh, already approved. The original drainage design that we had, uh, on the approved set of plans, included, uh, you know, uh, some drainage basins, as well as some art tank, art tank design chambers. So in this new set, uh, we're, we're swapping that art tank design out to be the cul-tac chambers, which are those, uh, you know, half moon type of chambers that go under the ground. We also have continued our, and completed our sewer, uh, commission review of the project, with tho, those changes that were requested, uh, through that process. Those are incorporated, uh, in this new set of plans, as well as some of the coordination with National Grid. As you, you remember, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, there was a, there's a power line that's going through the middle of the site. So that section of that power line is going underground, so we've put that into part of, uh, this design as well, in the revised plans. The, we've adjusted the, the limit of work, um, and we can get to that plan, uh, to show you where that, that limit of work was, uh, adjusted, and additional clearing was done. And that was, uh, reviewed by, uh, the planning board at that time, in two thousand and four, as well as the Conservation Commission. At that time, there really wasn't any issues with that additional, uh, tree clearing. There was some, uh, additional changes to the building, so we went from fifty-five thousand six hundred square feet to fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and twenty-four square feet. That's just modification of getting the architectural drawings finalized, uh, and making sure all of these, the drawings are ready to go to, to the building department for their approval. We also did change the pavement section, uh, to nine, two, and two, where we originally had, um, I think it was twelve, three, and two, as the, the town's pavement section. In the areas that, um, the drainage system is on the ground, there's a geo-grid system being proposed as part of that area to help support that pavement. So, if you wanna go to the next slide, so this, this plan here is really the, uh, previous site plan, and you can see, uh, you know, where the building is, of course, and where the parking is. And then if you switch to the next slide, which is the proposed plan, you can see a little, as they go back and forth, you can see the reconfiguration of the parking, you know, converting a lot of that compact, uh, spaces that we had into regular spaces, and, um, the changes to the building. So the retaining wall changes are, are really to the, uh, to the, to the top of the page, where retaining wall one is at the very top, yeah, Pam's mouse is almost right there. And then retaining wall two, to the, to the bottom of the site, as you can see it. So, the, the top, the top retaining wall will be what, like a versalock wall type of a design, and that's included in the, the material that we have. And then the other one is a, a little bit, uh, larger modular block, uh, for wall number two. And we've also put those, uh, structural engineering plans into the set like we did before, with the other, other block walls, which was a lot larger, larger walls. So, uh, we, we tried to incorporate all of those, those changes into the site plans. The next plan is really in outlining where some of that geo-grid would be, uh, placed on top of the systems. And then you can see to the, to the right, there's that loading dock area, it's kinda little, cut off a little bit, excuse me, Peter, so that's part of that, uh, geo-grid as well. The next plan, if you go, Pam, you can see the, the expansion of that loading dock and the, the radii for the truck turning to come in and out of that area. Um, next plan is just the whole thing, so that kinda really, you know, summarizes, you know, what we've, we've done as, as part of the changes. These are really, I, normally, we would do these as construction changes in the field, but we understand that the planning board likes to see these kinds of details, um, and have a handle on, on the changes. We did discuss this with Benjamin and David in the field, uh, and then it was recommended that we, you know, based on the changes that we're proposing, to come back in here and, and see you, and, and get your, your thoughts on, on what we're changing. I can tell you, based on hearing the other two projects, we did change the curbing, however, we kept the vertical granite at the front, instead of, and sta, and, and that hasn't changed. But the asphalt berm that was the town standard, we switched that out to a precast-in-place, uh, curbing, which is a, is a better curbing, instead of the, the asphalt, uh, hot asphalt mix type of, of curbing. So I think it's a, it's a benefit to the site, it's a, it's a higher-end type of a curbing, and will look much better, especially up against sidewalks and, and landscape areas. We really didn't change, uh, the landscaping or the lighting, all of that is, is pretty much the same, uh, so we still have a lot of, you can, Pam, if you wanna go to the, a couple of slides ahead to the landscaping plan. You can still see that we have a lot of the landscaping trees and bushes that were requested, uh, by this board, uh, on, on, um, the, the edge of the right of way for left of the road. So that really hasn't changed, and, um, the wetland replication plan is, has, was already approved by the Conservation Commission, that's already been cleared out, and, and graded and planted, and inspected, and, and is in, in good shape. So hopefully, when they start doing the inspections in the spring again, um, we'll see the growth in those plants. So, we, we updated the architectural designs to show, uh, you know, that little change in the square foot area, which is pretty much the same, the same idea of these elevations that you've seen before and approved. And then, if you wanna still go to, you wanna go to the three D rendering, Pam, please? There you go. So the architect, uh, updated that as well, so you can still see, you can see, see the plantings, and what it will look like in its, uh, as-built condition. So we did receive a peer review, you wanna go to the next slide, Pam, please? Uh, this past Monday, uh, the comments that, uh, we received from David in his office, um, were, um, focused on drainage. And, uh, we wanted to confirm with you the extent of his review, because some of the things that he's looking at now, uh, we really didn't change the intent of the plan, or the drainage design, in regards to, uh, what was previously approved. So, we're going from one peer review consultant to another, and now we're getting a, a, a different look and a different opinion of what was previously approved. And those kinds of things we wanna, we wanna, you know, discuss with you this evening, because those would drastically change, you know, some of our design that we have, and what was already previously approved. Some of which was the recommendation of this, the, the original peer review. If you remember, the initial peer review that we, we got was about, I wanna say, eleven comments on our original design, Mr. Chairman, and members of this board. And now we're at twenty-six on an already approved set of site plans. So we wanted to, you know, kind of, uh, you know, discuss, you know, those items at which we'd like to, you know, kinda pause on and, and not do, because that was already previously reviewed and approved. And, um, and also to, you know, to make sure. And, and also to, you know, to make sure that some of the things that we put in place that was part of that original review are carried forward and not kind of questioned at, at this hour. Because these, these are really construction items that we're talking about and changing material. The intent of the, the design is technically the same. It's the same type of church, same type of parking, a different type, type of material for drainage, a different type of material for a drain, for retaining wall. So that shouldn't really cause, you know, us to, to look at other items that were already approved in the previously approved plans, Mr. Chairman.
You might feel that way, but we don't want an issue with the property if, we'll say the other set of eyes had only seen 11 issues with it and the new set of eyes see 26 issues. So you're coming before us to make changes on a plan. And, you know, we're more than willing to look at it, but you've got to be willing to hear what our engineer also says too.
That's, you know, that's why we reached out to him.
This road works both ways, just so you know.
Understood.
Because one person sees it one way, this is our new engineer. And, you know, this is the one we take his word for. There may be a reason why the other people aren't here, right? So.
Well, I think the issue, the issue for us though is that the scope of review for this board in this process, depending upon how we do it, just let me finish.
You, you can finish when, when, I just want to get it straight though. You're not going to, you know, come in here and say, you know, we had 11 last time, now 26. So we just want to change this, but we don't care what your engineer says about that because it was approved. If that's the case, then build it as it was approved.
Well.
And then he'll, you know, he'll check on what was approved.
Well, you have to understand the legal analysis to that. So for instance, if, if we came in, if we, if we came in and, you know, we got approved for a certain footprint and a certain, a certain square footage. And let's say, for instance, we're changing nothing with the square footage of the building. And we're coming in for some minor modifications on landscape plan. That doesn't open the entire plan up for the board to say, you know what? We think the building should be 2,000 square foot shorter now. It would be focused on, the scope of the review is what we're looking to change. We already have an approval on everything else. So absolutely, we're going to listen to what the consultant and what the planner has to say. That's why we've engaged them early in this process, before we even came here. We're being very proactive with this. This is a large project for the town, it's a great project for the town. But I don't want the board to approach this as, this is a wide open review of the entire special permit, because we're not asking for that. We're asking for very focused, limited changes, and that's what the purview of the board is. So we hope to resolve those issues so that we won't have to involve you much further in those types of discussions behind the scenes with your consultant. You know, our goal ultimately, when it comes time for a vote, is to get a clean bill of health from your peer reviewer so that, you know, David can look at you and say, I'm satisfied with the resolution of the issues that I had raised. And that's the direction that we're going to move in. But I think we, we're just trying to keep the board focused on what we're looking to change.
And you know what, that's fine, but we're going to look at the whole thing because it's a project for the whole town. And I'm going to take what he says and look at it. And at the same time, you want us to go with the minor modification so that you don't have to file and go through the whole thing again.
I'm not, I, I, look, I'm trying to make two, I'm trying to make two points tonight.
And I heard your point, I'm just saying, we're going to take into consideration what our engineer says.
I, I get it. So we have two points tonight. Number one, we're, we're trying to educate the board on what the scope of the proposed changes are. We've done that on an apartment level first, before we came here. Now we're trying to educate the board on what the scope of the, the changes are so that you can decide on what you feel is the appropriate process under the bylaw to rule on the changes. Are we either going to do this simply in a public meeting? Or are we going to re-advertise, re-abotter notify and come in with a formal modification? That's what you're deciding tonight, that specific issue. To give you some context to make that decision, we're trying to run through the changes. I think we're going to have some preliminary discussion on TEC's comments so that you can hear those as well. My focus is to not really look at the engineering issues or the drainage issues. It's to heighten the board's attention to what the legal review is. And the legal review is, we have a full approval.
You're right, you do.
And we are here for a select group of changes. And those changes are what we are asking for the board to consider a modification of. And we're not, we're not looking for the board to make modifications to the things that we're not looking to change.
That's fine, but you know what, if it affects the whole project, we're going to look at it.
Oh yeah, you have to look at the consequences to certain things, sure.
That's, that's what I'm telling you. You can educate the board all you want legally, but I think we've got to look at this project by, through the eyes of our engineer. And then if you want to go down that route and tell us we can only do this if it affects the rest of the project, then you know what, then we'll have to cross that bridge, I guess, when we get there.
Yeah, no, I understand the concept that a change.
And I appreciate you educating the board, so.
Well, I'm advocating for my client, Mr. Chairman.
And I understand that too.
That's my role here.
I, I understand that, no.
So I do understand the point that if we make a engineering type change that might have a consequence to some other aspect of the project, then of course, the board is going to have to look at what that potential consequence is. But to the extent that a change has no consequence on another aspect of the project, it would be my position that the board does not have the authority to make those changes. So we'll, we'll deal with those issues on a, on a case-by-case basis. That's the only point that I'm trying to make. So I think with Brian going over the scope of the changes, are we going to have Dash make some preliminary comments about TEC's comments?
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Deshia Tony, entry with MBL Development. So, so quickly brush on the comments that, they, to quickly brush on the comments that David and TEC did have, we engaged them.
We engaged them over the phone this afternoon just to briefly give background on what we were planning on, our intent here was tonight. I don't think we need to run over every single comment tonight just to give the board a background on what specific items we had in mind as far as what we believe are outside of the scope of this current, of these current changes. I'd like to touch on a couple of things quickly. The main item in concern being, Pam, if you could go to the next sheet, please? I'd just like to highlight the location of the drainage systems, the subsurface drainage systems that we're converting from the R-tanks to the Coltech systems. If you go to the next sheet, Pam, you can see that the intent and the location of those systems really is almost identical as far as location. We use the same test pits, we have the same proposed groundwater. So that really did not change as far as our intent. What did change, however, are the profiles of the systems, the configuration as far as like vertically, we're using a certain type of chamber now versus what we were doing before. And that, where David's comments come in, where we will address them as needed are like minor discrepancies that he noticed between our calculations and the details that we show, which will not have a material impact on the final design. But we did, we are planning on addressing those items to make sure that we're giving the clients, the contractors, a correct set of plans. So we do have the intent to address those minor items as far, again, as like areas, discrepancies, things of that nature. As far as the test pit elevations, the groundwater elevations, that is really what we highlighted as something that was originally approved almost exactly as is as far as the chamber profile. We have a certain separation from groundwater before that we're more or less maintaining. And one of David's main concerns was the fact that the test pits that we performed might not have encompassed the entire system, which again, it didn't change from previously, but we are willing, if needed, to go out as like a condition of approval to do witness test pits just for confirmation purposes to say, okay, this is the groundwater, this is the soil material, and move forward from there again to ensure that we have a working design. We don't want these systems to fail, obviously. But that was something that we were hoping could be a condition of approval, not necessarily something that we have to do ahead of time because obviously lead time, coordination could delay the product further, which we don't want. So that was one of the items that we wanted to bring to your attention. Another item that you brought up a few times, David, was the slope of the adjacent grades in proximity to the basin. So right now, if you zoom in a little, Pam, to the front, the system that's near the front of the site, near the site entrance, yep, that one right there, you'll see that system and there's a few other systems that have grades that are in excess of 15% that are sloped down, which won't impact the system as far as construction. But there is a section of the stormwater standards that does mention a 15% grade slope requirement maximum in relation to the proximity to the infiltration basins. These systems are underground, so they're not really basins in that sense. And this is another item that was almost exactly the same as what we proposed previously as far as the slopes, the location of the systems, the proximity to that. We don't believe that the slopes that are shown now will have a material impact on the effectiveness of the systems. And again, I highlight that in the stormwater standards, it does specifically mention that this is applicable for infiltration basins, not underground basins. But this is, these are items, again, we'll go through more in depth. We will reference each specific section of the regulations as we see fit in a full-on detailed peer review letter. We just prepared something preliminary for discussion tonight to give the board an idea of what we plan on, not necessarily pushing back on, but what we think was covered in the original scope that we don't think needs to be touched on again. That was.
Let me just, I, I just, but clarification. You're going to change the system that you have up here, correct?
What is up here right now as shown is what we have currently proposed.
Correct, but you want to change that, is my question, to a different system.
So to clarify, this is what we want to change it to. The previous sheet shows what we had previously proposed. So those are a different type of chamber system.
Okay, so that, I guess my question, make it, the drainage that's proposed right here, you want to change, correct?
That was previous.
To a different type of drainage system.
Yes, a different type of chamber, yes.
And our engineer has pointed out a few different things. And you're saying that you shouldn't have to do them because it doesn't change the design of the work.
There are, there are certain comments that are, that are qualitative versus.
But am I right on what you're saying? Are you going to, are you going to change that drainage system?
There were some changes to the drainage system.
To the drainage system.
And there were some comments from TEC that we have to address.
Okay, back to my question. The drainage system here that you're saying you were going to push back a little on is a different system you want to put in than the original approved system, correct or not?
Correct.
Okay, that's it, that's all I want to ask, continue, thank you.
Well, I think the point that he's making is the functionality of the system.
I, I get that, but it's different.
It's a zero-sum game, you know?
That's your opinion and we have a different opinion. And that's fine, let's go through it, but I just.
Engineers will work through those issues.
I just wanted to, for clarification for my own head, you can't, you know, you're telling me one thing and then you're saying it's, you want a minor change, you want to push back on some of the stuff he's asking for, and I get that. And that's your right, you protect your client. But my, my own personal can't grasp is, it's going to be different, but you want us to not look at the difference and forget about some of the comments that he makes?
No, not, not, not for, not for all of the comments.
And I get it, I get it. So let's go through it. And I guess we'll only, you know, as far as you're concerned, any comments he makes has to go with whatever you're doing for the work.
I also, I also think that, you know, hearing from David would be, you know, appropriate at this time because, you know, in his.
You know what, we'll, we'll get to David again, let him finish. We will hear from David. You can finish, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I just want the clarification.
Well, we are, we're not also expecting to resolve anything.
Well, I get that, I don't think we could.
We're really just trying to get to the minor versus major modification. We know we have to ferret out some of these engineering comments and we're going to do that.
And I'm sure you will, I'm sure you will. And I'm sure we all will work to it, but I just wanted clarification for myself. And now that I have it, you can continue, we'll continue the meeting, we'll get back to David. You can talk 22 more times if you want. I don't care. We're here to work through it, but I just want the clarification for myself. And I just want to make sure we can't have it both ways. So let's finish.
Well, that, that's why I wanted to hear from David at this time.
You will, after we're done, go ahead.
All right, just to briefly continue, the last item that's specifically drainage-related. If you could pan up a little, Pam, to the infiltration basin on the left side of the site that's closest to Westford Road. That is a system that we previously designed. We did not propose any changes to that system. It has an outlet control structure and a spillway that's essentially holding the stormwater runoff up to a certain point, then sending it off to the site in two different directions to two different study points. So that, we did not change at all. One thing that was brought up in your review, Dave, was the spillway as shown is discharging to the parking lot. But that's something that we like to point out, that we're sending less flows to that parking lot than we were previously, which is a requirement of the stormwater standards. So that's an item that, again, we, this is, this, the basin is exactly the same as it was previously proposed. It's, the intent remains the same, we have the same elevations, we have the same infiltration rate. So that's, again, something that we can delve into further as needed. But we just wanted to bring to the board's attention what we have pointed out and that this was, again, previously approved. I think that more or less touches on the items that are drainage-related. And again, Dave has multiple comments that we will go through in an itemized manner, make sure that we're addressing as relevant. Items like relating to the retaining wall design that was finalized, that we prepared, some of the systems. We are going to prepare a letter, once we have the determination of minor versus major, send that to Dave and work with him to resolve these issues as needed. I lost my train of thought. Think, yeah, I think that pretty much covers it. Again, I just would like to say that as far as after conditions of approval, if we need to do test pits that are witnessed to confirm certain things, that we are more than willing to do. But just want to highlight again that you're correct in that the systems, the subsurface systems, which is really seems like the item of discussion, those have changed as far as the material and the type. But the intent, the infiltration rate, the separation, those items that are paramount in capturing the runoff, capturing the drainage, making sure it infiltrates, that intent remains the same. So again, I don't need to beat a dead horse, but.
I just want to make one comment to that.
Sure.
David agrees with that. So David's, David's letter indicates that the proposed changes to the drainage system and the retaining walls do not deviate from the intent of the original approval. So that's the biggest hurdle in most of these instances where we have disagreements between a peer review engineer and a project engineer. We don't really have a fundamental disagreement. I think it's more on some of these technical issues, which we should be able to work for.
We just want it to work right, that's all.
I, us too, us too. And I think you, the way you've seen this design team handle this project through its original permitting till now, I think you understand that they take that serious, so.
Sure, man.
I just want to say, I appreciate you guys coming in to present, present this today to us, because.
Would have been a fun discussion if we just went ahead and did all this.
Then that's definitely my point.
Be too late, bro, you just get an occupancy from the building commission, you're all set?
Yeah, I, I guess I appreciate the over-transparency. You know, I personally put a lot of faith in our engineer to make comments and recommendations on something like this. It was important that you showed how you're, the rest of the, or the main premise of, like, I, I believe that word intent. You're trying to meet the intent of what you have on this, the permitted project. We do have a different engineer that, than the original approved, but I do put a lot of faith in, in meeting that new intent of what that drainage is. I'm not going to be, pretend to be a, an engineer and. I'm not gonna be, pretend to be a, an engineer and understand what CULTEXs are and hydroCAD systems, but as, as far as you, keeping everything open communication with our engineer, and he makes us happy, I put a lot of faith in him to do his job and represent the town, put us in our best interest. Like you said, you, you represent your client, and they're in best, best interest. Some of this stuff, I, I believe can happen behind closed doors, because, like I said, getting into these whole drainage systems, I don't know what was approved on the other one and how the drainage calc's work versus this one, but at least our engineer can educate us and, and say, yes, they're meeting the intent of this. But just want to say, I, I, you know, I appreciate it, because, and I also would appreciate you guys accepting the sensitivity of drainage for this board, because we have had projects with issues. And so, that's why we're, I, I believe, being some sticklers about this. I'm, I'm happy that there's, you've improved some things, so, a lot of this stuff, it looks like, you're, you're right, I think you did a good job presenting it as, there's some challenges on this site that have popped up, putting, putting the, the power lines in the ground, that's fantastic, I think we mentioned that early on in this project, that's gonna make that, that property so much better. So, overall, I, I just, my opinion, I, I believe this is a minor modification pending what our engineer said. I, I put my faith in, in, in what our engineer is coming up with and being collaborative for it, so if you're open communicating with them, that goes a long way for me.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin.
Aight.
Definitely second, and appreciate what Jamie, Jeremy had to say here, and if we continue on with the, the paragraph that our engineer had written, although it does say that it does not deviate from the intent of the approved plan, he does go on to say that he wants to make sure the systems match Massachusetts stemwater standards that bylaws engineering practices, as well as potential safety issues of the proposed design. And that's where this board is looking for reassurance from both our own engineer and from you, that we are not looking at potential safety issues in the future.
Understood, and agreed.
So, again, also not a high-growth specialist in any way, and I'm glad that you're here before us, I'm looking at some of these design changes, and they look like they're gonna be nice, so...
Our goal is to work behind, after we leave here, is to continue, because we started with them before we even came to you, is to continue to work with them behind the scenes to hopefully resolve all or the majority of all of these issues, so that when we do come back in here, it's an easier vote and discussion for you guys. Because it is so technical and engineer-based.
And that's, that's all I'm looking for, is for our engineer to be happy with it, and if there are issues, we fix them now, is the point. And, but to push back and just say, it's already approved, we're not changing, you know, it just, just kinda, let's just make it right so it all works, give and take on both sides. Dave?
A couple of quick things, have you been by the site? Turning to Cozy, I'm sure you have been by it plenty of times here from town, but has anybody else been by the site?
We've, we've been on the site, I've been on the site many times, and...
So you're familiar with the runoff that's going down the road right now, past the restaurants that are there, past the cleaners that are there, all, all the establishments, and the ice problems that are being created that everybody's taking care of right now with the winter?
Yeah, we actually...
Just so you, hold on, just so you understand, that is what this board's trying to avoid.
Okay.
Okay? We have a, we have a project already in town that's not going so well. As we've said many times, we changed engineers for a reason, and we will go with what our engineer requires, is requesting to us, as he stated to us. It's, it's gonna be very simple, but I think we can get through it. I don't, I don't think we'll have a problem at all, but when it comes to the public safety, that's a, that's a, at least it's my number-one condition. I, I won't change any thought for anybody if there's water running out on that street. And as of right now, I think it's something maybe you guys might want to correct, because there's water running out on that street.
Do you want us to get rid of the granite curbing as well, or...
No, but I'll tell you what, I do appreciate the, the concrete pre-manufactured stuff that I, I, I like that, yeah, it's a very good improvement, that's, that's an excellent, I'm glad you brought that up.
You know, we, if I may, through the chair, we, we do weekly inspections at the site, excuse me, COVID, literally.
It's okay. We won't let the guy next yet, that's all right.
No, these are just, I'm serious, like, those are effects from having COVID, and he knows. So, we'll take a look at that during our SWIP inspection, actually, tomorrow is our day to do the SWIP inspection, because that runoff could be part of the country swale that's on Westford Road already.
There was no runoff coming down that road prior to the site being disturbed?
Okay.
How's that?
So, so if that's the case, and there is runoff coming off the site, we will address that.
Thank you.
But I, I want to make sure that, we, we know that there was a swale there, or still is a swale there, that does take some of the stormwater from Westford Road and, and brings it down through all of these properties, you know, past the police department, and so on and so forth. So, but we'll take a look at that, and if I can, we'll address that in the SWIP inspection, and make sure that the contractor is aware of what needs to be fixed, and will report the next time we come back to this board. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Even if you're not coming back, you can just call the office or let the engineer know, and they can tell us you're gonna have to...
Okay.
Jess?
Yeah, I thank, thank you for being proactive with all this.
You're very welcome.
I've been in favor of this project from the beginning, and I continue to support it, and I'm looking forward to working through whatever issues we may have. You're proposing an extra twenty-one hundred square feet of building, can you show me where that is?
Yeah, so, Pam, if you want to go to, we have the layout of the building in that slide. Is it an increase in, is it an increase in the foundation size?
Yeah, so some of the square foot area changes is in the basement, and the loading dock changes that we made.
So it's added to the foundation?
So, yeah, so not adding to the, so a little bit adding to the foundation, but majority of that square foot area that we're talking about is also underneath the footprint that was already approved. So we've got some smaller, you know, bumps out, out here, where the architect is, is making some minor, minor changes to the building and construction and things, and, and maneuverability inside the building, so sometimes changes in, in little areas of the jogs that we had...
So it's not like you added ten feet or twenty feet, or whatever? I'm getting back to Jess, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
So, so we're, we had originally approv-...
That's the original, that's the original layout of the building and the parking. So if you can see, so that's, that's the new layout.
Looks like you squared things off.
Yeah, squared things off a little bit, so all these, some of those nooks and crannies that the architect originally gave us, like, went away.
So it looks like the...
Do you want to show them?
Yogi, Yogi can tell us exactly.
Sure, if you would. Hi, my name's Yogi Patel, I'm one of the volunteers for that organization. Right back here is our kitchen, and that built, that area was kind of jogged just for design purposes, but when the architect was designing the interior, the, like, these jogs are just a pain, so we're like, all right, let's just straighten it out. So that was the, the biggest area where that came. And the basement, obviously, expanded what we talked about, that's under the footprint, that doesn't change much, so, things like that, like utility rooms and all that, if we squared it off, it just made the interior design much easier. So, it would have been, you know, previously there was a jog here.
Previous?
Got you.
Yogi, while you're there, have we changed the entrance to get in on the left part of the building?
This part or down here?
Either.
So right there, yeah, we were just pointing, that looks as though that's changed too from the original plan.
Um, yes, yes, you are correct. The vestibule portion did change as well, right? So, basically, we decided to put glass around it, so it's still like, kind of outside, but it's also inside, and we're thinking in the weather, when people are kind of waiting out there for, you know, their ride to come in, they'd be inside of a glass, so we added glass around, so with the glass that effectively came, interior.
And are there any other changes that you've made, other than that? I don't want to have to point these things out, I want you to tell me what they are.
I would, I would probably rather have the architect here, we could potentially do that in the next meeting. But yeah, that's, that's it for the most part, the basement, like we said, this jog, the front area, here, and am I missing anything?
Change in the front, it's just the addition of the glass, right?
Yeah. So the, the other change would be above, correct? Up above the square footage on the jog?
Yeah, so that would naturally carry, I mean, this area is one story anyway, so it didn't kind of factor, there was nothing above it, so there's, there's no second story there, but the basement didn't get added.
So the basement basically is where that twenty-one hundred square feet are coming from, then?
Yeah, and the elimination.
Um, over here, yeah, and, and above, so the footprint increased twenty-one hundred square feet. The footprint, right?
This is the change.
Okay.
Right? So I, I just want to be clear, that, that number is the footprint that, that changed by squaring things off and adding that glass.
Okay.
But I, I would, sorry, I'm not too technical, so I'd probably refer to our architect to get into those changes more.
While you're there, can I just, the, I know you, you get more parking by eliminating smaller parking spaces, which ones were they?
Down here, Brian, correct?
Yeah, so... Yeah, so we made some changes to that, and then there's some changes to the right, and the compact spaces that we, that we originally had on the original site plan, a lot of those went away, so that, that real estate was, was reused to make the parking spaces more conforming to the, the regular size, so we only had an additional two parking spaces in that change.
So you didn't lose any, you gained them?
Yes. Yeah, so we added, right there, so we added those parking spaces too.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Got you.
But the overall count just went up by two.
Apologies for not having all the answers, but...
It's all right.
Thanks, Yogi.
Yeah, is, so we're finding changes here, are there any other changes that we should be loo- looking for, that, that we don't know about? Okay. All right, that's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, Dave, you're up, again. I don't know, do you want to take your letter one by one, or...
I, I can, I can kind of go through high-level items instead and leave some of the smaller ones that should be able to be worked out.
Let's go one, each one, and just for clarification, if, if you, if they say, like, we're gonna push back a little on that one, just let us know, we'll circle it as we go through, if you don't mind.
Yep.
All right?
Or, or a dash, leave the...
Yeah, whatever. Throw somebody else out there, right?
So the way the letter is set up, I kind of itemized it, so there are a lot of repeat comments for, for different basins, so...
So just go one by one, overall site plans, got there?
One by one, overall site plans, increase approximately eleven thousand nine hundred square feet of riprap, those are above retaining wall two, and north of infiltration basin two as well, those weren't accounted for in hydroCAD, that seems like a pretty easy fix in, in hydroCAD, when you go through and...
That is one comment that...
Pushback, right? Just say pushback or not, we'll get through these here. That's a pushback?
Sure, yes, pushback, yep.
Okay.
The bio-retention garden, the interior grass slopes prevent reasonable maintenance from occurring, because they need to be mowed two to twelve times a year per a stormwater handbook, typically we like to see no gradient three-to-one slopes for this purpose.
The infiltration or the bio-retention actually is three-to-one, it's just a little confusing, which we can clarify, but it's three-to-one in our detail, three-to-one in CAD, it's just we had a dash line.
So you're gonna work that out with them?
Yeah, we'll work that out.
Okay, so that's not a pushback, right? Sound good?
Sounds good.
That, that's, I think that's easier for the board, maybe?
Site entrance driveway, based on the proposed grades, is approximately ninety-five hundred square feet, that's released into Westford Road, untreated and uncaptured, based on just how the grades are set up and the, where the rain garden intern is, is on that lower basin, on the rain garden, I should say.
Pushback, but we discussed it a little earlier, we will work with that as needed.
So, we're not gonna have a pushback, we're gonna take care of it?
Yeah, I, I think you just need to be a little bit more clearer, so Dave can see that, how the stormwater goes from that entrance into the basin, that's, that's all I, I mean, it's...
Not a pushback, a clarification.
Okay, and still...
Glad you clarified that.
So, we're gonna take it that they're gonna correct it?
Sure. Proposed infiltration basin one, the proposed emergency spillway is designed with discharge water into the abutting property, twenty-eight Westford Road, in both the twenty-five and one-hundred-year storm. It's understood that existing drainage patterns appear to release water to this parcel over land flow essentially, this essentially creates a concentrated release in the proposed condition, and it will discharge in a concentrated flow to the parking lot, abutting property.
You guys working with it?
Yeah, that's gonna be some pushback.
There's some pushback, okay. Yep, go ahead.
So, what you're saying is it's running into someone else's property, right?
Yes.
Okay. You guys are aware of that?
We're aware of that.
A lot of from your project is running into someone else's property?
We're aware of that, but to clarify, just a little, we don't need to get too deep into the weeds, but there is existing runoff already going to that property, that we are essentially controlling with the infiltration basin, when it gets to a certain overflow point, then it'll overflow into the parking lot. So that is something that we will push back, we will discuss as needed to resolve.
Because it's already happening pre-construction, that's the point.
That's his assumption.
No, the assumption is based off of our...
Prior, hold on a minute, prior to this land being cleared and everything, I've been from the town a long time, as have you, there was no water coming out of there. Is everybody following each other? This is one of the problems we're dealing with in the town already.
So if I could clarify...
So if we can control the water on your property, that's gonna be created on your property, that's what we're looking for.
Understood, so I think the runoff you're referring to is going into Westford Road directly from our site entrance, and the runoff that we're referring to with this specific comment is going to the abutting property that has a car?
Which runs down the road and goes out, coming from your property?
Yes.
Okay, so we're on the same page?
Yes.
Okay.
Retaining wall one, the majority of these comments are, have to do with subsurface infiltration, E, E1. So, that subsurface system is built approximately ten feet behind retaining wall one, where essentially it's infiltration, infiltrating a foot above the bottom of the wall behind it. This retaining wall is built on a, I believe, an eleven-foot or a ten-foot slope. Essentially, they are infiltrating water at the toe of, or at the base of this retaining wall, at a hundred-year storm, I believe it fills up the water column, it's about seven feet, so the retaining wall is holding up not only the, the earth, but also that seven-foot water column, which, in the plans for the, the stamp plans for the retaining wall from the manufacturer, they obviously don't show the, that subsurface system in there, I think it was more just a, my worry of breakout under the wall, a global failure of that wall, based on the amount of water that's there, and the amount of water that you'd be infiltrating to the foundation of that wall essentially, I just wanted to make sure that that manufacturer was aware that, that subsurface infiltration chamber was installed behind it, and that they accounted for that in their calculations. The other large issue that I saw with this wall was the geo-grid reinforcing that is required to hold up this wall, it actually extends, and it's, it's unbuildable the way that it's shown now, because it extends fourteen to eighteen feet behind the wall, whereas they only have ten feet where that infiltration basin is shown, so that was a conflict that I saw.
That's five, right? Number five?
Yes, well, that's, that's five and six, sorry, I skipped ahead, yes.
Five and six, you guys...
No, no pushback.
On either one?
No.
Okay, good. Go to seven.
Seven, retaining wall profile shows four thirty-five, the plan shows four thirty-seven.
No pushback, we'll, we'll address that.
Okay.
And then...
See how easy this is?
Eight, regarding spot elevations, top of the wall not consistent with the proposed service grading, is, as shown, landscape elevation is a foot over the top of wall at the, at that back of wall.
No pushback.
Proposed top-of-wall grading elevation not consistent between the retaining wall profile and the grading and drainage plan.
No pushback.
Number ten, see?
Similar, smaller comment, retaining wall profile proposes the wall three fifty, the drainage plan proposes at three forty-seven.
Nope, no pushback.
Don't get too comfortable.
It's coming, right? All right, we're halfway there, half the problem solved.
Subsurface system B, so this is one where the infiltration basin, they require fifty-foot offset from slopes greater than fifty... Subsurface system B, so this is one where the infiltration basin, they require fifty-foot offset from slopes greater than fifteen percent. This one, B, is the L-shaped right on Westford Road. The issue with this would be the worry of breakout because it's so close to that slope where it's infiltrating water. The reason for that offset would be to prevent any sort of breakout in the event of stormwater coming at the infiltration basin and infiltrating and then breaking out the slope. That fifty-foot offset gives it enough room so you don't have to worry about it.
Overflow.
Uh, well, breaking out of the slope essentially, so, so that's, that's eleven.
Yeah, pushback.
Okay.
So we can, we can identify where in the regulations where it says it's okay to do that.
You know what, you guys are going to have to work it out.
Right. I know, I know we're saying pushback, but there's-
I, and I understand.
Refusal.
What I'm doing is eliminating as many as we can.
Right.
And then I'm going to go back and look at what we have, and we got to get close on them. That's all. Go ahead.
Twelve, so test pits in there, reported ground elevation of one ninety-two, five-four, within the proposed chamber elevation. Test pit is not within the footprint of system B. Its proximity to system B indicates the southernmost chambers most likely do not have two feet of separation. Essentially, what that's, what's that saying here is the test pit that is, I guess, encompassed in the L, has a groundwater elevation that's shown that's significantly higher than the two test pits that were used to design this infiltration system. That test pit is actually closer to a decent amount of those infiltration system, or those infiltration chambers, closer to them than the test pits used. So there's a reasonable amount to perceive that between the test pits that were used and the test pit that was not used, groundwater actually does increase and that the bottom of that chamber is actually within the, within the groundwater versus two feet above it.
Yeah, pushback on that one.
Pushback, but we'll get to it after. So, well, we'll clarify this after number twelve, I'll come back to it. Go ahead.
Thirteen, so system C, similar to B, it's just a little bit further south. The fifty-foot offset from the fifteen percent slope, once again, just to prevent any sort of breakout from that system onto Westford Road.
Pushback, this one of the test pit, pushbacks?
Yes.
Pushback, yep.
Okay.
Fourteen, the bottom of system C is proposed within sandy loam, where they use a loamy sand exfiltration, exfiltration rate. So the details should either specify they overexcavate, which is about another foot, or they can use the sandy loam material.
No pushback.
Sorry.
Good.
Fifteen, the total storage modeled in Hydracad is larger than the storage provided on the Caltech system detail. I give the-
No pushback.
Just an error in the table.
Go ahead.
Sixteen, this is subsurface system D. This is the one that is in front of the building. Once again, total storage model is not consistent with the storage provided of the Caltech system, so inconsistency.
No pushback.
Go ahead.
Seventeen, the surface area modeled in Hydracad doesn't match the system footprint provided in the construction plans.
No pushback.
Next, eighteen.
The difference in groundwater elevations between the test pits within the two, within the two different storm chambers that are kind of abutting each other in this system. They're pretty far apart from each other, and there are two systems that are at different elevations. It's reasonable to assume that there's a potential for groundwater, obviously, to change through there and at that middle elevation where it drops, those chambers may be within groundwater or might not have two feet of separation from the groundwater. All this comment is doing is request additional test pit data within that area of that chamber system.
Pushback.
Pushback on eighteen for another test pit, okay. Go ahead.
Subsurface system E one, we touched on this when we talk about the retaining wall. Per volume two, chapter two of Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook, infiltration BMPs require fifty-foot offset. This is the one where they only have ten feet of offset to the retaining wall and then the slope right next to it.
Pushback on the slope specifically, we're not pushing back on the proximity to the retaining wall, just to clarify, I guess.
On nineteen, I don't see anything about the slopes greater than fifteen percent?
Yeah, so that's what we're pushing back on twenty when you get to it that way.
So you're saying it's not within the fifteen percent, or it is, but you-
What we're pushing, what we're going to push back on is the proximity to the fifteen percent slope, but it's kind of like related to the wall. So I just wanted to clarify that the wall proximity, we will be working, and we're not pushing back on that. The fifteen percent we are pushing back on.
So you want to keep the fifteen, you want to keep it the way it is?
Correct.
What's it at now, Dave? Do you know?
Ten feet.
It's at ten feet?
We, we want to shift the system as needed to work with the retaining wall, the slopes themselves, that the slopes will still be within fifty feet.
Pushback, we'll just get back to it after. Go ahead, Dave, twenty.
Twenty, the location of the system appears to conflict with the GeoGrid retaining wall one. We covered this in one of the previous-
Yeah, no pushback.
Twenty-one?
Once again, the, so system E two, it's the smaller system, just to the west, or just to the north of E one, require a fifty-foot offset from the slope of fifteen percent or greater.
Same as nineteen.
Yep.
Twenty-two?
Twenty-two. So subsurface system F, this is the one that's further south on the site. It's over, I should say, north of where they filled in the, the wetland through there. That wetland has a groundwater seep collection system, which essentially is a French drain that runs from where they filled that in to the essentially outletting to close to the wetlands. They are proposing to infiltrate right above it, which, based on the, based on the elevations of the systems, that infiltration will infiltrate right into that French drain system and essentially turn into surface water to the wetlands. So it wouldn't actually infiltrate, it would just be collected there and then be transferred to the wetlands.
Pushback.
Okay. Go ahead, Dave.
Comment twenty-three, there's no test pit data within this current infiltration system. So our recommendation is for them to provide test pit data for this.
No pushback.
Twenty-four?
Total storage modeled in the Hydracad is larger than the storage provided on the Caltech system detail.
No pushback.
Twenty-five?
The peak elevation in the two-year storm surpasses the invert of water quality ten. Essentially, water quality ten is what gives the infiltration system the pretreatment that it requires in order to infiltrate. A peak elevation in the two-year storm overwhelms that, so it prevents it from working as it should and, and kind of separating out the solids. So in a larger storm, what will happen is those infiltration systems will, will raise up in elevation, water level will rise. So then there'll be backflow into the water quality ten, so water will end up coming in, but it won't be pretreated adequately. So we request the Hydracad model output for the half-inch water storm to confirm that it won't back up during a water quality event.
No pushback.
Twenty-six?
The peak elevation in the hundred-year storm surpasses the top elevation of the system storage, so essentially it's, it's, once again, backing up and it's, it's higher, so the water elevation would be higher than the top of the system. You would get water ponding in the catch basins and in the, I guess, the subgrade of the parking lot.
No pushback.
No pushback.
See how easy that was to cut them in half already? I just, if you don't mind, just to clarify in my head a little here. If we go back to twelve for a minute, it says, oh, and your test pit reports a groundwater elevation one ninety-two within the proposed chamber elevation, while the test pit is not within the footprint of system B, as proximity to the B indicates that the southernmost chambers most likely do not have two feet of separation to groundwater. Tech requests additional test pit data within the footprint around proposed elevation one ninety-two and one ninety-four to confirm system's feasibility. Now, I don't want to get into a bunch of stuff, but you say pushback, but is that, is that just, you just want to see a test pit, basically? To see if the water, that they're going to have the separation needed between the, I guess, the surface water and the two feet of, before the drainage water, correct?
Right.
For filtration, correct?
Yes, yes.
And-
So on our end-
Problem with the, doing a test pit is-
So on our end, we say pushback, it's more so we'd like the system as proposed to be approved with the understanding that prior to construction of the system, as a condition of approval, we can do additional test pits as needed. So we are willing to do the test pits, we just want to wait until after we get an approval, we're ready to construct, then we can go out and do it, they can be witnessed as needed.
Let me ask you this, we approved that and come to find out there's an issue. Is it easily fixed? Or we've seen that problem in town where we didn't have separation, so that's not an easy fix, correct, as an engineer?
There's, there's fixes for everything.
I'm sure there is, but you know what I'm saying, so I-
So what we would have to do is, so, so say we go out and we do the test, and we have standing groundwater here-
At one ninety-two, so you got to come up to one ninety-
Come up eighteen more inches, then we redesign the site to adjust-
Just that portion of the-
Just that portion.
Dave, does that work? Is that how it's done in field or not normally, because you could run into more issues, correct?
Yes. The, the worry here, though, is the bottom of the elevation of this system is at-
One ninety-two.
No, well, the bottom of the system is at one eighty-six. That test pit that was ten feet away, there was groundwater shown at one ninety-two. So it's a significant, so there's, I mean, the six feet, that groundwater was shown six feet above the bottom of that, where they're infiltrating. So that's where the concern comes.
All right, but just, and I guess just to get this thing going and not to beat a dead horse all night, it's got to get worked out, obviously, and I don't think that this board's going to approve stuff for your new system if Dave doesn't think that you can get through it.
So we just got this letter on Monday.
And so did we, so-
We just started looking at it like on Tuesday, the first time we talked about it was today. So what, what I'm hoping-
Go ahead.
And we, we, well, Mr. Chairman, we've made a lot of progress to even get here today. We've done a lot of things behind the scenes to get to this point. We're not looking for finality tonight.
I, I, I look at eight things that need to be rectified from what he said, nine things.
It's not a lot.
It's not, and, and I'm hoping it can work with the engineer-
So here's what I would ask, what we're looking for, I, my view of this is we should be able to do these things as minor modifications in a public hearing process, a public meeting process. So what we would like to do is spend the next couple of weeks working behind the scenes with David and with Ben and try to either eliminate, compromise, resolve the remaining issues that are here. And then come back in front of you, and the funnel will be that much narrow, and we will then have a discussion over what's left in the funnel at that point and try to resolve it at that point. And then if we get to a point where everybody's comfortable, well, then we look for a vote then on the minor modification. If we're not, then we come back again and we try to resolve it at that point.
Honestly, I don't see it myself, I don't see a problem with that. I think that we got, you know, that most of it's really-
Knocked off sixty percent of it.
Addressed. Other stuff you can't build, even the old system, if you're going to have water in it, it, it doesn't make sense because somebody's going to pay for that problem. And I'm sure people paying you don't want to pay for a problem in the future.
We just haven't had the time to shake this out at this point. So, you know, this is opening the discussion to get this done.
So what are you looking for, two-week continuance?
We would like a vote tonight that these are minor modifications with a two, and then a two-week continuance to try to resolve the issues with the peer review engineer and then come back for further analysis before this board.
You don't want to come back in two weeks and see if it's all shaken up by then and look for a minor modification, because it'd be a lot less on this?
Well, that's kind of what you just said.
Well, that's what I'm asking for.
Yeah, put a two-week continuance, and then we'll vote in two weeks.
No, I'm not, so the vote in two weeks if we resolve everything would be for an approval of the minor modifications. What I'm looking for tonight is for you to, now that you've heard everything and seen everything, that we will address these issues as minor modifications. You're not voting to approve them tonight, you're just approving the process for us to resolve these things.
Jeremy?
Yeah, like a straw poll, yeah. I mean, if you resolve everything, I think everything looks good for the next meeting.
Ken?
I think your, your parking and architectural changes seem minor to me. I don't know how to react to the drainage.
Dave?
I, I don't want to put down anything being minor or major at this point, myself, just because we don't know what we're getting into. When we get a six-foot difference in some of the spots on, on where the, the water is already to, that, that, that could be major. So I, I'm not going to put my name on that, just kidding.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of work to be done, even on the things that you're not pushing back on. When I look at number five and it, it, it uses the term global failure and sliding failure, I, I, I mean, I think these are big things that need to be adjusted and, and need to be fixed, so you've got your work cut out for you to make sure that this, this is, this system is going to work. I think you've got a lot of work to do.
I'm not digging my heels in on the merits of any particular issue right now, I'm just talking about process, that's all. We need two more weeks to narrow the funnel. I mean, no matter what, the process is going to be. The, the, the decision to be made is timing, because if, if you decided major modification, we're looking at legal ads and about notifications and time leads to do all that stuff. And we want to keep pace with the progress of the project. I, our view of it collectively on the design side, our, on the applicant's team, is that these issues should be able to be handled through a minor modification process.
Why can't we do that all in two weeks? You come back and you shrink this list-
Yep.
And we get comments from Dave that, you know what, this is-
Yep.
Field-adjusted very easily in the field, and trust me, I have no problem with field adjustments. You know, as long as an engineer looks at it or the town engineer, you know, I don't see why we couldn't do everything in two weeks.
It's clear, it's clear to me that that's what you want to do, so let's do that. Let's just continue for two weeks and then we'll have a vote on minor versus major at that time.
And we could have a vote on-
Or maybe an approval.
An approval at the same time. That's, that's honestly what-
Let's do that.
I'm looking at is, as long as, you know, you guys work it out in the numbers and, you know, I know you can't do it. Well, you could do a test pit now, but it's, you know, whatever you guys work out. All right, so continuance for two weeks, are you happy with that? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue fifty Westford Road to our next meeting on March the twentieth.
Do I have a second? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Here and none? Good luck.
To the extent we need some additional time beyond the two weeks, if we have issues, I'll just notify Pam and we'll kick it over another two if we have to.
No, Dave kind of sits back and doesn't read his emails and stuff, so you'll be waiting on him, right?
I won't be here on the fourth.
Hey, they just threw you under the bus.
Meeting after, you won't be here.
I won't be here on April fourth.
Okay, so, all right. We're going to try to get it done so that we can get back in there on the-
Thank you very much, everyone. All right, no problem. Good luck. I'm sure it's, it's going to work out fine.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, project updates, ninety-three Kendall Road. Back up.
Back again, and I have Dave Williams from SDG here, who's the principal of the applicant, who I think you remember well from all of our board meetings together. I think this is less, less bumpy than the last one.
I don't think it was bumpy at all.
No, no, it's, uh, just more issues to address than this. So anyways, this project is rolling ahead as planned, everything is going great. And we mentioned this in the original permitting process that we were kind of vacillating on the phasing aspect of things, whether we were going to do phase one first or phase two first. We were going to kind of go out to the marketplace to see what the potential tenants were thinking in terms of what they desired. And then we ultimately decided that, that meeting, that we were going to go with phase one first, but with the footnote that we may be coming back looking to do phase two first. So Dave will explain what has happened since then, and that's basically what we're looking to do, is change the order of phasing.
Good.
Thanks for putting us on the schedule on a late notice. So the project is moving forward. is moving forward. We're actually closing on the property next week. Um, we were able to get some work done prior to the closing from the Mass Works grant, um, a little creative help with the seller to try to get some of the roadwork. Commerce Drive, we've got the water and sewer in and some drainage. Uh, we're able to get that done. What's happened in the market is, uh, you know, soon after we got our approval, things kinda dried up a bit industrial-wise, slowed down quite a bit. Um, we see an increase, but the desire of the, of the market is more smaller buildings than larger buildings. Um, if we had to stick with phase one, we would wait till we had a tenant. We wouldn't speculate it. But with 125,000 square feet, we're ready to push forward, um, and start construction right away. So, um, as mentioned in our hearing, uh, we talked about phasing. It was approved as a phased project, building one first, building two. The discussion, as I recall, was really more the specifics around how we're gonna leave it if we're doing building two first versus building, building one. Um, we sent in a sketch just to kinda give you an idea, but I'm, I'm trying to get an idea both on process and, you know, kind of a straw poll that we're going down the right direction, um, because we think from the market standpoint and to get into the ground right away, we're gonna need to do building two first. Um, our thought on this, from a scope of work standpoint, is to put the whole drive in, uh, all the way up to building two, along with the landscaping, the drainage structures. And then lot one, we wanna be able to take it down to be pad ready. Um, there's a lot of ledge in lot one that we're gonna have to take down and use some of that material in the construction of the rest of the subdivision. Um, and when we're ready to stop working on lot one, we would hydroseed and stabilize the site, is what we're trying to do.
Excuse me, Dave, when you say lot one, uh-
So the fir-, as you're coming up the driveway, the first building that's 275,000 square feet.
What, what you originally were calling phase two?
No, that was phase one.
That was phase one. This is the new plan. You're looking at the new, this is new.
So I should be looking at the old plan?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I tried to put that there for reference. Yes. So the first building was phase one, the second building was phase two. The first building is 275,000 square feet, which is a large building in this market to speculate, which is why we're trying to reverse it.
But you're asking to come in and clear cut the site at this point?
Yes. 'Cause we wanna get lot one, for two reasons. We wanna get that pad ready so that when a buyer does come along, or a tenant, we're ready to go. But it's also using that materials to help build out the rest of the site.
Right.
But you're gonna do all the landscaping up to the pad roughly?
Yes.
And that's the, the whole roadway completed, finished, coated?
Yes.
And go right into building phase one?
Correct.
Simultaneously do one and two, uh?
In, in a perfect world, we'd like to go right into building one, if the market's not ready for it. It'll be pad ready and it'll be stabilized and hydroseeded. But the landscaping on the roadway would be completed.
So, and we go phase one, but you already, you're gonna build out, I guess, phase two
Correct.
Now?
Yes.
So how long, uh, like when you put the road in, clear cut here, uh, I guess, get your foundation in before you have this all grass and the roadway and that landscaped in? To your padded, you know, to pass your site. How long are we gonna be looking at it unfinished before you complete it?
So in completing building two, we're seeing, we're seeing the scope of work, the roadway. The timing on lot one, I don't know yet. I mean, that's market-driven.
I guess I'm getting confused here.
Okay.
We're gonna call phase one, the new building you're doing?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so you're gonna do that one, get in and start, put a foundation and be done with it?
Yes.
But in order to do that, you wanna clear cut lot phase two?
Correct.
So my point is, how long is it gonna be? Do we have to wait until phase one is complete before the roadway and the grass is completed?
No, the roadway and the grass and the landscaping is, I'm saying, is part of phase one.
So will that be completed, we'll say with binder and hydroseeded, before you start putting up walls? Like if we give you the foundation, like what kinda timeframe is scheduled?
So it'd be a normal building process, right? We're gonna, we gotta get the roadway up to build the building.
I get it.
Um, but as we're doing sequencing, the drainage and then the paving and working our way up there, it'll all be part of the building process of that back building.
I guess what I'm looking for then is a schedule, you know, what kinda timeline?
We can put that together.
You could be two years working on phase one and we have a clear cut phase two for two years. And I don't think, I think that was some of the issue we had last time. I think Chad's had concerns because of the highway and clear cutting, I guess, phase one now and, you know, being a-
We can provide a schedule.
So that, that's all I'm looking for.
Sure.
You know?
No, I can appreciate that.
What do we think the schedule is?
Right, and, and that's all.
Generally speaking?
Generally speaking, it's probably 14, 15 months.
I guess let's get back to the original question. You get your foundation in. Are we gonna have a pretty much binded road in there with the drainage done by the time the foundation's done on phase one? Because you're not gonna be putting a foundation in if you need material from here, right?
Um-
So like if-
Yes. I would say yes, but I, I think we need to see a schedule and I could provide that so you know.
You know, it's a, oh, you know, for this, I, I think I'm speaking for a couple of people on the board to see it all clear cut.
Okay.
Uh, for two years. I don't think that it's gonna be appreciated, you know, where-
And, and that's not our expectation?
It's not your plan, but-
But that's why I'm here, 'cause I wanna understand where you're coming from so we can come back to you with a, with a plan.
I guess what I'd be looking for, and we'll go through the board, but the road, you know, the road to be done and your hydro seed, have that pad ready. You tell us how big of a pad area you need, you know, and you could even, you know, do some of your hot tub around it. I don't know if you will or not, but to have it hydro seeded so we're not looking at clear cut property before you start building your building. When I say that, I mean, have your foundation in, you know, roughly start the construction before you get an occupancy permit, you know?
I don't, I don't see the first lot, the bigger lot, being taken down, pad ready and stabilized before I start vertical construction. But certainly by the time the vertical construction of the se-, that back building is done.
All right, and that's fine.
Can I just throw something real quick?
Yeah.
Just, I think I, I do a little bit of construction. So I think what he's trying to tell us is the materials that he's gonna be using from that site that he clears with the, the biggest building is going, he's gonna be using that throughout the whole-
Project.
Project over there. So what he's saying is he'd be using that in the driveway, probably somewhere, backfilling foundations, floor stuff, all that. So for him to be able to do this job more costly, he's gonna wanna be able to leave that material that he does, whether you're blasting, I don't know what you're doing on that, what, whatever they're doing. He's gonna wanna be able to leave that there kinda as storage, do it. But that he's saying, once he's going with the walls and everything, which means all his drainage and everything will be done around it, then he's gonna be putting down. Am I right? You're gonna be putting down a little?
Yeah.
That was what I got.
And, and I understand it, but I guess I'm looking for more of a schedule. Well, the schedule is gonna be six months like that, three months, two years, 18 months. Sure. You know, 'cause-
We can give you a defined schedule for the next meeting.
Yes. That's all. Um, Jeremy, you want anything?
I'll, I'll just, I'll second what the chair had said. As, you know, I think just clarity about when, when you get in and you want an occupancy permit on one of the buildings, just what's gonna be the status of the rest of the site. So I think that just, just so you don't get into a point where you come in here and then we're, we're pointing fingers saying, that's not done, this is done, and, and then it just becomes a back and forth. So I think this is good conversation. That way we're on the same page.
Yep.
No more questions?
I haven't talked. Charles?
Sewer would be put in with this project as far as the way you're doing it? Running the sewer all the way up to Kendall Road?
So now the, the sewer already in Kendall Road up into Commerce Drive, and it's stopped at the end of where the public road will be right now. The back building has a force main that goes out to Middlesex?
Yep.
So there's a gap, there'll be a gap. So the sewer won't be completed yet for building one until we do that building, if that makes sense.
It does. I just, 'cause there's another project in town that's really dependent on that sewer being run out. And so I wanted to know whether you were planning on running it all the way out or not, and you're not, that is what you're telling me.
We are in conjunction with our construction, which we don't have a timetable yet on the first building. And the sewer work that we're doing is all private sewer work. It's not a public sewer line that we're putting in. I understand there are other people talking about wanting to tie into our sewer.
Yep.
But the sewer commission's made it very clear that this is a private sewer that we're paying for, we're putting in, we're maintaining, uh, forever, right? So as we build building two that has a force main that goes out to Middlesex, when we get into the construction of the, the larger building, that one's gonna tie into a sewer pump that Commerce Drive and the line that we've run into Kendall Road feeds. Then it'll be live in. But that's gonna happen with the bigger building.
Okay. Um, we chose the phasing for a reason, and that was to try and preserve some of the, the woods and so forth that are there. And phase two was gonna be something that was gonna come after that. I'm not in favor of clear cutting the whole thing, putting the pad in, and hoping that sometime in the next two or three years, you'll find a tenant for that.
What if we did what we did up on, um, Middlesex Road? I think we did like, uh, like a tree clearing bond. If the project, if they clear cut and the project didn't happen, there was, we did something, um, as sort of a, uh-
So the, what we did up there was, yes, we put that in place in the event that you clear cut and then nothing happened?
Yes. So I'm talking about something similar here, and we're talking on a far shorter time period. It would seem to me that that should mitigate the concern if we did something like that. I mean, take a look at our schedule first, you know, because you may be-
Absolutely, yeah.
You may be comfortable with that anyways.
Yep.
But as, but as a, as a, as a backup measure, if it's, the schedule's gonna be longer than what you want, maybe we can look at that type of a bonding situation, just for the clear cutting. So that there's a mechanism for the town to redress it in the event that the project never happened, you know? Just keep an open mind about it.
Yep, yep. I always have an open mind. People know that.
I know.
Just so we're clear, this, this decision is market-driven. As we sat here and went through approvals, there was discussion and we, we talked internally, you know, let's just keep going the way it is. And at the time-
It made sense?
It made sense that we would've built the first building first, as opposed to putting all the roadway and infrastructure in for a smaller building, you know? But that's what the market, you know, the market is saying right now. And for us to get going right away, um, that's what we need to do. Okay?
I think if you come in with a schedule and reasonably look at it, and if there's a bond, you know, you wanna put up and-
Well, yeah, I mean, the bond's not gonna put the trees back and then, and not gonna put the wildlife back, and that's my concern, so.
All right, well, let's start with the schedule, because I think you're gonna look at the schedule and feel comfortable with it.
Good, okay.
If you have a tenant, I'm sure it's gonna be expedited too, so.
You wanna give us any hint on what's going in?
Probably adult entertainment and cannabis, something along those lines.
I figured.
In the storage, in the storage.
I've read that somewhere before.
The usual.
All right. You guys all set?
Yes.
How long you need? Couple weeks, or you wanna just-
Yeah, put us on for, if you could put us on for the 20th.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue 93 Kendall Road until our next meeting on March the 20th.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? All right. We'll see you in a couple weeks. Thanks.
Thanks.
Very much. Uh, Dave, I don't think we need you. Probably didn't need you for this one. We just kept you around for the pain. Um, approval of minutes from January 16th.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from January 16th, 2025, as written.
Second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Obstain.
Okay. Hearing none? Passes. New business topics that the chairman did not reasonably anticipate. Hearing none?
Hold on a minute, I was going, I was going in, I'm sorry.
Thought I could get it in quick enough.
Do we wanna get these guys up and then we can do that?
You guys are here for update of assuming?
Yeah, 147 Frost Road.
Not on the schedule, right?
They're on the schedule.
Right, well then-
I'm sorry.
We did forget you.
It's not here in front of us.
I'm sorry.
It's on this.
Okay, come on up. I'm sorry. I apologize. Would've had you in here sooner. We almost, we almost shut down before we heard you.
So, 147 Frost Road.
Yep.
Uh, gonna, going to continue from our last, uh, conversation, which was, we were going to, uh, you allowed us to get a little bit more time to let us shop around. Uh, we had one quote for site, one quote for electric. Uh, we were able to get, uh, more prices. Um, we were able to narrow down who we want to go with. And as of right now, contracts have been drafted up. They're in our hands. We've sent them back because they were missing some scope, um, which, it's minor things, like they had light pole bases weren't written in there, but it was discussed. Um, and like line striping was discussed and, but it wasn't written in there. So, um, and then the only other thing that we requested from our electrical, uh, contractor was just a foot candle map, just to make sure that there's adequate lighting uh, in the premise. So, uh, and we have that now. So right now, in terms of schedule, uh, within the next two weeks, we're planning to get a surveyor, which is our engineer out there, uh, to mark out the points. And shortly after, I would say probably end of this month to first week of April, the latest, uh, to start, uh, doing the excavation to put down the conduits for the lighting, um, and start prepping for the island, uh, which will be followed up by, uh, backfilling, pavement, um, and then pavement, uh, binder course, uh, and curbs, final pavement, then line striping, all, each activity taken about one to two weeks. Um, and then at the very end, we'll do our plantings. Um, plantings, if we don't do it like in the, you know, if it gets too hot, uh, we'll probably do it the, probably early, uh, fall. But we're planning to just, 'cause it's trees and foliage and all that, it's, we're planning to do it right now. Um, we don't foresee that as an issue since it's hardy, um, plantings. Uh, that's, that's basically the update. If you guys have any questions.
So you're looking at April to get started?
Uh, April to, well, I would say last week of March, the earliest, so basically two, three weeks from now. I, as my sk-, my, to get my surveyor on site, I just need to give him about a week or two. So he'll be coming out in the next two weeks to just do the surveying, mark out the points, so we can actually put the conduits and the islands in the proper place.
Okay. Um, so I guess what kinda timeframe you're looking at to complete the islands and stuff?
Uh, to-
Out the landscape, and if you have to wait till the fall?
So, uh, the islands itself, we'll probably look at, uh, like, um, around, around May. So-
To be completed?
The, the islands itself, are you talking about with the plantings? Like if, for 100%, I'm looking at no later than like end of June.
Oh, okay. I thought you were gonna wait until the fall to start.
No, 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 no. The, in terms of like line striping, the pavement and everything, that'll be like June. If I had to put the trees in, 'cause it may be too hot, then I just might push the trees, but I don't foresee that right now. So, uh, but the whole pavement, line striping, the islands, the light pole bases, the light poles, uh, everything wired up, um, everything, basically per plan, having all the parking spots, having the guardrails, all that in within the next like two and a half, three months.
Well, sounds a lot better than what we've had over the years. So, um, I think maybe I can speak for the board, maybe, uh, come like in April, if you relay it to, uh, the engineer, um, or, or call him and you can go up there and check it out. Do we have 50?
Well, we do, but that was another, we need more money. Did you get my email requesting more 53G money?
It's all right.
Maybe not.
She knew she had to speak. She was speaking anyways.
So what, what is it regarding?
The, uh, the 53G account, which pays for-
Inspections.
Consultant review and everything. I sent, we need more money in the account because it's, it's in deficit right now. So I sent you an email- So I sent you an email with a request.
Okay, was it to me? Okay, I, was it in the last, like, ten days or the last two weeks at all?
Yes.
Okay, I was out of the country, so.
Oh.
Sorry. Yeah, I'll, I'll, we'll definitely address that.
I'll send it to you again on Monday.
Yeah.
And I, I guess what I was saying, so we didn't drag you in like next month?
Yeah.
If, if, uh, Ben can get a report of the, our engineer, who we now, once you pay, will go out there and check it. You won't have to come in in April, but, um, depending on their report, if the board's all right with that, and then we'll have him maybe in May, or if they're moving along, we'll see him at the end?
Sure.
Does that sound good?
Yeah.
Jeremy? Sound good to you?
Yep, just send me an email and then we'll coordinate and go from there.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And when they do come back, we can put them on at the beginning of the?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I would've, I, my mistake, I guess, I.
Thank you for coming in, appreciate it.
Thank you very much. So just make sure she gets her check.
Yeah.
Cause she'll be looking for you.
We'll take care of that.
All right. Uh, go ahead, Dave. You all set?
Good. I'm good, yeah.
Old business, one forty-seven Frost Road?
That was it.
Oh, at the end, jeez. All right.
Motion to adjourn?
Well, wait a minute.
Oh.
Yeah, new business. You, you skipped over new business.
No, I did say new business, and he said, what about them?
Yeah.
So then I went back to him, and when he said nothing, I thought he forgot.
I thought we were still talking about them.
I was gonna, I, I.
If I may.
Okay, go ahead.
Two things.
He has new business.
You did have the opportunity.
Please. This is the project, uh, that was approved up on First Street for the house that went in. This is today. Uh, these pictures were sent to me by a town resident with some concerns, and I think you'll see their concerns. Where's this again? First Street?
First Street.
Off of Middlesex, it, it runs from Middlesex to, uh, Ting Road. So.
We didn't approve the house, right?
Well, they came in front of us for some, uh, lot changes and that stuff, if you remember.
On First?
A and R or something?
Yeah. Yeah.
It was A and R. A and R, but.
We got no control over that, unfortunately.
What about the water, though?
Well, yeah, I know.
An A and R, though.
So this is right near the pet cemetery?
No, this is up the top of the hill. Uh, this is right next to the Ting'sboro Lickers. If you were at Ting'sboro Lickers, there's a little road called First Street.
There a pond there?
Oh, yeah, 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 okay.
That's the road.
No, but is there a pond?
No.
There is now.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It's, uh, that's, that's what's there now.
Unfortunately, we?
Who's it gotta go to?
Have to give an A and R, gotta go to the town.
Pam, if you would?
Town engineer.
Town engineer?
Don't know. Someone's gotta fix this.
Yeah, consider it Jake.
Yeah, Jake, Jake should be.
I'm sure he'll be thrilled.
Yeah, yeah, he.
I mean, that water had to be there before the house unless they added all kinds of fill.
Never there.
Well, yeah, there might be some kind of clogged something.
Clogged drain or something, but that's who they go through.
So, um, next question was, any more updates on the golf course, which Dave's already gone, but I didn't know if you had any, Ben?
Yeah, I'm sorry to, I.
No, no, no.
He's peeking his head in.
Come on back, we're welcoming Dave back right now.
Go on, try and get us for four hours.
Oh, I hear you.
Four hour.
Just real quick, any update from the enclave?
Um, no, winter, winter was pretty, um, um, slowed things down out there as far as, uh, everything, everything seemed the same, no, kinda status quo, I thought.
There's still water coming down, aren't there?
Oh, yeah.
I was gonna say, nothing, nothing's really changed, um.
When you go up there, can we get an update on how many houses are built?
Of course.
How many are remaining to be built or permits needed?
We can get that information from the building department.
Yeah.
Can we get that? Yeah, I didn't, I mean.
I also think our reports kind of, um, show which areas have been built, which areas not have.
No, I mean, I, I.
I thi-, I, I think our reports capture that, if, if I'm being honest, but yeah.
But just, uh, you know why? Because if we're still getting water, and we've had this discussion, we gotta get the attorney and, and there's get, you know, these bonds are, are performance based, we don't have a bond on it, but?
Yep.
But, you know, the engineering's all performance based. If it isn't working, it's gotta be changed in, in the field, wherever. But if we're still getting water, we gotta try and, cause once they're done, they're gonna be gone.
Absolutely.
You know?
Been saying since the start of the project.
They just finished up on, uh, um, what is it? Uh, padlock, not padlock, the one off of Westford Road?
Crown Road?
What is it? Crown?
Yeah.
Off of Paddock?
They sold their last house, and I think there's a bond left of not much money, a hundred eighty thousand or something.
I know, it's like three hundred and something thousand.
It's three hundred and something?
Yeah, cause they, they, we, we had a couple of calls from?
People were gonna buy the house, and I heard they bailed out because of the, the road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, yeah, they're, I don't know if it was their real estate or their attorney, whatever, inquired about the road, and they spoke to Jake and they spoke to Ben and myself, and, um, they, the developer has not approached the planning board or DPW for any kind of street acceptance or any, any bond release or anything like that, so.
Quick question.
But who's plow-, oh, sorry, okay. If you drove down there, it's big ice in the middle?
We are not plowing that.
No.
But what we need to do if the houses are sold is, we'll contact the attorney, or maybe the builder's gonna finish, hopefully he does, maybe we can reach out to him, and if he's dragging his feet, we gotta attach that bond quick before prices go up and?
Bond is already there.
But we gotta, we gotta take the money and fix the road, is my point, if he isn't gonna. We can't let him go on for years. Let me, on bo-, on binding on a road, two years is all you guys usually give, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's not a wearing course.
Be dug up and redone, or?
I, I don't, I don't know what the spec off the top of my head, but I mean, it's not a wearing course. It's, it's there, um, it's, it's there for support, but a wearing course would also, um, it gives the asphalt more thickness and it's, it's, asphalt works as a system together, the subgrade, the binder and the top course altogether, so it'd be like running too thin of a, um, of an asphalt for two years and depending on how the?
Right, so, I mean, that's something I think we?
Well, you want us to reach out to the developer and find out what he's, what he's up to?
See if you can get something. If not, if there's?
Maybe he wants to come in?
If there's? If there's three hundred and sixty grand left, I don't know if that's enough to finish the road, which I know there's numbers for engineers, but there's also numbers for the town to pay and numbers for a private contractor to pay, so. You can have some fun with that, Ben.
You, we could tell you were looking forward to it.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, one more thing, um, industrial way. Has anybody driven on that road?
Of course I have.
That's insane.
Tons of holes.
The fact that, uh, you, you have really good businesses in this town that use that road and the shape that it's in, it's just really a shame, and we approved that crane business back there. I know, uh, it, it didn't pan out, um, the way they wanted to, but just imagine if we had the crane company really functioning.
Well, he's still working on that property from what I see.
That road is incredibly busy.
All the way down on the right-hand side, it's gonna be, uh, Chomsky Crane. Um, we approved, he bought the land at auction and blah, blah, blah.
You have the daycare center that, they have to use that road to leave. And the shape that it's in is, I mean, it, it.
Private road.
I get it, I, I, and that's, and I, I don't think we have a lot of leverage, but, um, we, I think we do as far as businesses getting approved on that road and putting the pressure on the ownership of that conduit development because, um, it just really is a shame that, you know, businesses like, that, uh, the daycare center is gonna suffer for people that wanna patronize that business and have to leave there and basically lose it in ox-, in exhaust system. You have complete areas of that road that are just completely missing. It's not even?
I'm actually surprised that Javi, being the big, probably, you know?
They're big.
Holder down there, um, hasn't filled it in. It's, it's been like that for?
But it's, because it's on the, it's on the ownership of that condo, it's gonna take your tire out.
Is there a condo association?
It's definitely an association because it's a private road. It's an industrial complex, so.
So that means the?
Storage facility.
Still is part of it.
They ha-, and they have to use that. They, they don't have another way to leave.
Is there, is there, and this is just a question for, I guess, for Pam and, and Ben, which you're, you're not gonna have this answer, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask it.
Okay.
Is there anything that we can do through the police and fire department for safety purposes, because they still have to, um, respond to calls on that road?
I mean, it's dangerous.
It is dangerous.
You have the gymnast, uh, the dance studio down there, you have a lot of after-school activities for, um, kids and other youth.
Yeah, you don't wanna, you don't wanna penalize the kids either, you know?